County Council, and I would like to ask you, if you would, to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's cut to the chase.
This is the other day this morning?
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
The purpose of this meeting, as I understand it, as we call it, was to have a sharing of information and sharing minds on where we are with the jail. We had a little pause in the process of building the jail, and so to take it back up again, we had to have our financial advisor to look it all over again and tell us how much we had available or the potential of to pay for a jail. And that's really, I think, in the Bailey, with the council here. And then our part was to go back to the architects and have them re-figure it and look at it and figure out what's it gonna cost now. Because as every one of you know, prices are just going up so fast. It's unbelievable, the inflation has gone. In the last year, you know, we've gone from two dollars to three fifty in gas. And building materials, many of them have gone up more than that, percentage wise. So, we have two things to look at: available money and cost. And of course, we'll take into account everybody's opinions and the opinions of the council and the commissioners here, and see if we can come up with some kind of a plan here. Yeah, we have a time limit. We set on this at five thirty. If we figure anything we had to say, we could surely get done in an hour and a half. And so I guess at that point, I'd turn it over to the council chairman, Mr. Blue, and see what, how you want to start this out.
We're here to receive information and...
Okay, can you hear him out there?
No.
The council's here to receive information and from the commissioners, and we will be taking that back and discussing that in our own meetings at that time. Any other council member or anything else to add to that?
Okay. So you have not come to a figure yet of...
We've provided permission with figures.
Same one? Sixteen point five, wasn't it?
Yes, and that was for Baker Tilly, what the county put forward.
Sixteen and a half million. And we were, how far off from that, Josh, when we came up with the last, the last go around on it?
Well, we authorized fourteen and a half million dollars. This is kind of weird on top of this. So, the council had authorized fourteen and a half million dollars upon contracting with El Avatas. So, excuse me, I'm gonna start over, sorry. We, after contracting with El Avatas, which is our architect with us today, the council had authorized fourteen and a half million dollars for the project, both El Avatas and the construction manager, until bid day. And they both said that that number was going to be sufficient. On bid day, this is the first go around, the previous construction manager, bids came in at about eighteen million, eighteen, just called nineteen million dollars. The council unanimously vetoed or did not approve that. The council and commission had a joint session some months ago and elevated our number to sixteen and a half million dollars. And sixteen and a half million dollars all in, for lack of a better word. And that's where we stand today.
And we have now received from the architectural company Elevatus, El Avatas, I don't know how to pronounce it. What? Oh, okay, please, take the...
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
No problem. Greg Whaling with El Avatas Architecture. So I provided this letter to the commissioners, basically outlining the cost of a floor plan that, from the one that was bid, basically a year ago. Since, knew we were over budget, I wanted to put together a revised plan, something that hopefully would still offer everything. You wanted, in a hopefully less expensive envelope, basically, I say envelope, or what you mean, the building envelope, was less expensive. One of the things we did was take, basically make the building as a rectangle as opposed to the shape that it was. And it's a pre-engineered metal building, and it's a few thousand square feet smaller. But, all that being said, once we got those, that price, the numbers here that I'm saying would be eighteen million dollars, that's the construction cost. That is equal to the fourteen point seven million dollar number that was on bid day a year ago. So that were called the construction cost numbers. So, last year, on the other floor plan, it was fourteen point seven million dollars. And this plan was a little bit smaller and simpler build, it was eighteen point one million dollars. So, certainly going in the wrong direction, trying to get ahead. On top of that, then there are, you see the other numbers, those are the other soft cost numbers that build up to the number that Baker Tilly was providing, which they were at sixteen something, and then we took off the issueless fees and their fees. And I believe it came out to fifteen four was the construction cost plus contingency plus our fee plus the CMVs. All of that has to be added in or backed off. So, really, what you're coming, start with fifteen four, and you start thinking how all of those fees, you would have fifteen four to spend, and as you see here, worth basically twenty-one million dollars. And that's without our fee. I didn't, I didn't put in a fee because, really what I'm hopeful of is that we can provide services to put together the documents that are, if we can use one that is similar that we've done other places, like we could save, you know, fees, we could save you a lot of money. And I, so I don't want to say this is our fees, but I don't want, we could very easily save the county a lot of money, so I don't have that listed. But you can see, we're at twenty-one, we're still four, four and a half million dollars to five million dollars off. So, I don't, I don't know what to do there. I mean, I've got some scenarios that we've been talking with other counties about, and that is, there's different financing options. Instead of bonding, maybe that you could, USDA loans, low interest loans, that is an option. We've talked with other counties about that. Your county would qualify as the, there's a certain percentage of rural residents required. Carroll County would need that. That is, that is an option. There's the BOD method, the Build...
Operate Transfer.
Build, Operate, Transfer. And so that is, a private entity would loan you the money. They would, they would own the building, lease it back, and, oh, whatever term you guys could work out, lease it back, and then you own the building after whatever that term is. That is an option. I'm not, I'm certainly not a finance guy, but those are options that are something that could be looked at beyond, beyond the BOD people. Just as Commissioner Brown said, the costs have gone up exponentially. Our materials, paper is short, so the detention market is as high as it's ever been. And so all of those factors, they're all going against us, trying to get this project to another big price. Lean times on products, pre-engineered metal buildings will be six or eight months. Pre-cast panels, we don't have pre-cast on this, but I mean, those are about ten months. It's just nuts how long the duration can get roofing, roofless. It's not a good situation. I don't know if there's any specific questions relative to these numbers or...
Do you have a recommendation?
I think I would look at some other financing options. That is, the other, the other option on, as far as the building would, and I haven't discussed this with sheriff or anything, but you could, it's basically a square footage. The building needs to be X size and have the number of beds that are required to run the facility. But it has been done in the past where you build the housing, the intake and the housing, and leave the administration in the jail building that is where it is now until you can afford to build that piece on the, on the jail. That's an option. And then you, then you can cut, we're, let's say, roughly thirty-three thousand square feet. If you could cut off the administration, you could be down to around twenty-five thousand square feet. That's, that's a number that starts to, starts to cost you more. Is that, is that a great solution? No. Look at, the sheriff sure doesn't want to create a new location.
So Josh, or Greg, that would be considered like a phase in, step by step process into the building and the entirety of the jail itself?
Yeah, it would basically be a two-phase. You build the intake processing and the housing area, and then put the administration on. So, all of your evidence storage and administrative areas, the road officers, detectives, everybody would be off the jail site. That's, that's another option.
Do you have a off-the-cup idea of how much we have to cut out of it for?
Well, it might save us money, sorry Greg, it might save us money in the long run, but if you separate the jail from the deputies, you're gonna hire more personnel just to run the jail.
Well, I think, Steve, we're probably gonna have to do that anyway. I think we're, we all probably are aware, we're gonna have to increase manpower, human power, to facilitate what we're doing regardless at some point. So I think we all...
Can you speak to that, Sheriff?
No, we're gonna do that.
Can you speak to that, the manpower issue?
Well, I, based on the information that I have researched, in essence, if we're looking at a new facility, I almost have to go where we currently are. I currently employ seven full-time jail staff, and I would anticipate we'll be closer to fifteen or so coming up with a new building.
I guess I asked a poor question. If the operations, the police, the sheriff's operations and the jail were at two set different sizes, would that increase the staffing requirement?
Potentially, yes. Again, obviously, the jail aspect would, because you have a control room or control center, if you will, within that jail facility, you would have to demand, you have jail personnel on the floor, if you will. So, in order to keep the security, or the facility secure, I guess, I anticipate that. Jail of this configuration, having a center hub and sort of vagrants going out, you would have one, one jail staff in that central location watching it, and then you would have, depending on how many people, you have one or two handling any things that need to occur in jail stay. And then you'd end up to twenty-four, so it's a situation, although at night, yourselves, you've got a lot less involved than you. To answer your question, you would probably be in the neighborhood of construction, you could probably be in the thirteen million dollar range. I mean, you could, you could get it pretty darn close to where we would be.
Construction costs?
Construction costs. And this is just in my head right now.
We would call that the jail-only option?
That would be, yeah, if you wanted to say that, yeah.
I just need to remember a bed count of eighty-five. I mean, how many, how many beds came off that previous number? Why, where have we come up to one hundred and four now?
Well, we were at a, we were at a hundred and twelve, and then we were down to a hundred and eight. And this, this plan is a hundred and four. So, you might be thinking of the eighty percent number, what are really the number of cells per bedroom, fewer.
I thought we asked to see a cost on eighty-five beds.
That's my approach as well, please.
Because we are, we were sitting there with a capacity of forty some. And we have a discussion and a question why we were tripling the size instead of just doubling. But I do recall you saying, the less the beds, the, not always the...
You're not, you're, yeah, you just can't, can't totally take off. I mean, you're still gonna have, you're still gonna have the intake processing, and normally you'd have the administration side, it probably doesn't change. It's just the number of beds that you're, and depending on what your cells are, or the warrant, that would be the other factor, how much they cost. Obviously, a cell is more expensive, but it's also more aligned with what you need to have a good classification. I don't, I don't have...
Because I thought to significantly lower the cost of the jail, we were going to have to give to lower the beds.
Well, in this case, it's either lower the beds or move the administration. So, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I mean, I can see taking two, two one fives, I guess. It's probably better to do that, because that's important. Try to, try to...
A pod, I'm sorry, A pod is roughly fifty and sixty beds, correct?
No, pod, we've got anywhere from twelve to sixteen beds per pod. And there's only, there's six, well, depending on which plan you're covering. Right now, there's a plan that is a hundred and four currently. We have six pods, two of them with twelve beds each, and four with sixteen beds. And then there's two pods north that have eight. Now, one of, we could, we could take alternates, and take alternate for one or two of the bedrooms to get it down to eighty, eighty-eighties or something. Twelve, cut off twenty-four, but we put back in. We could be probably in the nineties, the nineties, bed count, just have less, fewer cells, let's say, these are, and then you could, you could go back and put those in if you need to.
Because it's pre-manufactured, Josh.
Right, they're pre-manufactured cells, so we can just leave a space in the outside wall where you can pull, pull that portion of the wall and slide it in. Then there's, you would have to build the stairs and the mezzanine and walkways for the second level, cells. So, there's, there's some work to be done.
If I recall correctly in our mission meeting, there was a discussion between pods and cells, and how pods were less expensive to build.
For a dorm.
For a dorm, okay. So, pod and dorm are synonymous terms?
Pod is just the grouping of either cell beds or dorm beds. So you can have dorm pod or a cell pod, which is called dorm. And dorm pods are less expensive, because instead of, they would have showers and toilets set off separately, and the rest of it's just an open room.
Okay. For the less violent?
Yeah, less violent, and that's, and that's something that the sheriff would have to buy off on because, we were in some, some areas where you do projects, they don't want any dorm beds because they say that every person who's fit to be in a dorm bed is already out on the street in a GPS or, you know, ankle bracelet or something. So that, but that depends on the counties, and how much space you have, and what you're doing with the semi-dorm.
Mr. Hawkins, would you want to weigh in on that discussion a little bit? If you would, maybe between you and Toh.
Wait on the what?
On the discussion between dorm beds and the folks that could potentially be in a dorm bed versus those who may be out on the street in a GPS or a, you know, probationary situation. Because it's less expensive to build dorms than it is actual cells. But do you see that need in our jail facility to have a good number of people in a dorm situation versus being probationary and being out on the street in a GPS capacity or something like that?
Yeah, you know, I'd have to take some time to look at that and give you an accurate number. I'm sorry I wasn't prepared for that. And then it's kind of hard to hear out in the hall of it, but...
Sure.
I mean, there's certainly a need for both of those, but at this point, I'm more concerned with the people that are not probationary or not eligible to be out, that we don't have any place for. So that's more, that would be more the court's immediate concern.
So, you would be more apt to look at cell space versus dorm space, potentially?
Well, you might be asking the wrong, first of all, because I'm gonna tell you I want both, because we can use both. And I think that's a large part of what community corrections is addressing now. When you take the numbers, one, the sheriff is housing here or outside the county, plus the number of people who are serving on either pre-trial release or through community corrections. I mean, I've indicated that to you guys before, that number's very, very high between the two. We're already kind of doing both.
Judge, can you say that one more time? The, the number is very, very high. Can you quantify what that number is, or clarify what that number is?
For the number of people in the jail, the number of people either being, serving a sentence or being held pre-trial or awaiting sentencing, and then the folks who are out of jail on pre-trial release, and those serving a sentence on community corrections, is probably somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty, I would imagine, easily. And I don't know that that's gonna slow down any. Sheriff, I think, help me if those numbers are way off, but I think that's pretty close in the ballpark, anyway, where we're at. And, you know, I don't see that trend changing, given the new cases we have coming in, as far as that goes. But I, there's, there's a need for both. But I think, I'm not sure I can answer intelligently with facts to back up what I'm saying, other than we could use both, but what makes the most sense economically? As for the sheriff, to the, you know, to the company doing the research and the architecture stuff.
Judge, I wondered if we were to have a work release facility? I know that's possibly part of the one twenty-five and one fifty, I would assume. What percent of the people might be eligible for that, if you would guess to me?
There's, I'm sure there's a percentage. And you know, the same, the old adage, right? If you build it, they will come. Wherever you build, I will fill.
So I guess, what's a percent, maybe?
Build two hundred bed jail, we'll have two hundred people in the jail.
Okay.
And, I mean, look at Cass County, for example. They're gonna house four hundred people, and this is all said and done, and they're all twice our size. Is their crime that much more significant than ours?
No.
They have more officers on the road, they're catching people, and, you know, we're slightly, we're staffed slightly differently, and I think that's the issue. But I couldn't answer that with an exact percentage. It's a good percentage that could use work release. Maybe a quarter of what we already have, maybe.
The sentenced population or the total population?
More so a quarter of the sentenced population, I would say. The case law and criminal rule twenty-six is kind of going away from pre-trial detention in a secure facility. And that's kind of the trend that we're seeing now. But there would be a significant portion for workers, but I still don't think it eliminates the need for secure detention for those serving an executed sentence that are not either safe or, you know, not the right candidate to be out on release for, for whatever reason.
Then your next question would be, how many people that you sentenced on work release or house arrest violate whether or not they're doing that, and they have to be read detention? That's...
Mike, I can only guess, right? Because we don't have the right release.
Right.
Because we don't have work release that hasn't been available to us from other counties for a period of time, you know, for COVID reasons, et cetera. But there's gonna, they're gonna be, they're gonna be violators, right? There're gonna be people on probation that violate, um, who need to do some period of time. And sometimes, they're not all long-term executed sentences, it may be a short term, it may be ten days, it may be five days. Some are statutorily mandated, some are, um, just the sentence that we think's appropriate, maybe to get their attention or to do whatever we think's necessary to get it back on track.
Question, if they, if they violate work release, for instance, if we have work release, do, does that, uh, put them in a position where they could go to, like, an Indiana state prison then, or not, not, not never, or?
Well, I don't wanna say not never, right? But, uh, the likelihood is, I think sheriff can probably talk to this, they're probably gonna stay here and be housed, uh, on the level six facilities, at least for mine. Now, on the level fives and higher, uh, those, I think, are more likely to be housed at the Department of Corrections. And I, I think that's a fair statement, Sheriff.
How many, how many people do we have in Carroll County, maybe, going into the state facilities long-term? Would you guess, out of the people that get arrested, how many end up going, going into Indiana state prisons, district?
I, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay.
I would say it's probably a small.
Ten percent, maybe?
I doubt it's, I doubt it's ten percent. It's probably less than five, I would say.
Right.
We'd probably have more juveniles in the Department of Corrections than adults at this point. And of course, it's ten times the cost.
That's surprising.
Yeah, agreed.
Sorry, Greg, we got a lot of things there.
I think what we need to hear now is from the sheriff and what he thinks we actually need. He's the man that's in charge of the building and all laid on his shoulders. He's the one that's responsible. So I'd like to hear what the sheriff's recommendations to us, the council, and we got a lot of low ones sent out there.
Are we not, are we gonna conclude our discussion of the building then, or?
Well, the sheriff needs to tell us what he needs to be, what he would like to see in the building, that way it would help.
Well, isn't, isn't the design?
Work release and all that, too.
Isn't this the design that the sheriff has agreed on?
No, no, that, I mean, from the, you know, previous discussions, it's similar, it's very similar to what we talked about, but no, this, this.
This jail is not what the, the sheriff has helped to design?
It is very similar, just reshaped.
I, oh, so this is your, okay, I understand.
Yeah, this was just an attempt to try to get it within, I, I knew it was a.
Functionally very similar.
Functionally very similar.
Just, just different.
So, he has not, I have not had input on that, but it's, it would, it would take much.
I understand.
Do you have a, like, a plan there that, that at least we can get one copy of, with this pre-engineered building versus the old plan, type thing?
We've probably worked on it with the pre-engineered, it's gonna be two thirds.
So I'm gonna be intending that you three worked on this new layout, or you just handed it over to?
Absolutely, yeah. The criteria was, uh, we've got a cut where we could cut. And, uh, uh, we need to find out what the cost is gonna be roughly after the cuts.
We're basically seeing this for the first time, when he's basically redid it. We've seen some numbers, but we've never seen, because we just don't even go back and do what he can do. Work is magic.
Well, I mean, there hasn't been any magic, per se, because, you know, we're in an engineered building, so there've been cuts, but we're two million dollars above where we were.
Over more than six months.
Well, yeah, six months, so.
We're pushing almost five million.
Yeah.
My concern while he's passing on is that we're looking at numbers today. And if we, ten of us all get together and say, boy, here's what we're gonna do, and we put it all together, there's nothing that says that, that those numbers are gonna be there by the time we get ready to do it.
Correct.
You know, I mean, we're gonna see this inflationary time, we need one more back here if you could. Continue to go, so.
So, the, the one that has A B C on it, that's the, that is from last year, that's November of last year. So the other one is, is basically just a, uh, reduced version, uh, just squaring it off easier to build, pre-engineered building. So it's just like a, a structure that was less expensive. At the time, if they were to have been side by side last year, the second option was certainly going to be less, but it's not possible.
Are they staffed, are these staffed, or is this all like?
Yeah, I can slow it down. Well, I can slow it down.
The, the A B C is the original.
Okay, so that's the new one, right there.
Yes.
One twenty-eight.
While everyone's looking at that, I have a suggestion. I just feel like we need to have a committee moving forward of some commissioners, some councilmen, sheriffs, and that can meet and work on this and, you know, keep closer eye on it as it moves, you know, through the grapevine. And so that when we come to these information meetings, we have the numbers, we have the layouts, we have everything ready to present to the public and taxpayers. And I think it would make time move a little quicker than. And of course, your, eleven of us will be there and maybe, you know, a major Philly person could be there, or just, you know, but I, I would see a committee just wanting to have that, to keep on top of all of those.
That is, that's the original, one from the year ago. So, you can, and just as that housing, just so everybody understands, the housing pods are to the left.
How's that?
Borrow that. So, that is a dorm, that has a dorm for eight beds. These are double bunk, or bunk beds. There's eight there, there's eight there, and then we have twelve, uh, and then the areas where you see the, the stairs, each of those pods are, uh, got two tiers, so there's a, a second level, so these cells are stacked on top of each other. And, uh, then this one is a twelve, twelve beds total, sixteen beds, sixteen beds, sixteen beds, sixteen beds and twelve beds. And that, that is controlled by one person sitting in this central location that has a view, basically three hundred and sixty degrees around. There's a recreation space right here. Then, uh, the intake processing area is basically this section. So you've got the vehicle salary port, uh, and then the intake processing is in the center core. There's holding cells along the sides, uh, on this side also. This, right here is your nine-one-one dispatch area right here, and then this is all administrative. So that's, just in a nutshell, that's the, that's the layout. And that is similar, if you go back to the plan that is, the one was from a year ago. It has basically the same spaces, just reconfigured a little bit. There's a few, few spaces that have been taken out to, to, to state some sort of bridge. But again, this was just, uh, this was just an attempt before we put a budget number together, uh, so you, hopefully, see there, just see where we are at this point. And we did, uh, this plan, a similar plan, we're doing a project in, in Missouri, and a contractor out of Kansas City did the estimate for theirs, and a contractor out of Fort Wayne did an estimate for this one. And they were within a few hundred thousand dollars or so. And we feel very confident, at least, those two areas, contractors, two different, totally different areas, uh, you know, putting in those, those numbers, so.
So they built it for?
No, it hasn't been built for that, but that was a contractor in Kansas City that was doing, they were pricing it out.
And did it come to the, to the number here that you're, the twenty million?
Well, it was the, it was comparing it to the eighteen-one construction cost. So, it was, it was very similar to that.
So, to be determined, any, any testament on what?
Well, because what I'm saying there is, just like if, if that, if that other project goes, and I'm going there on Sunday night, I'll be there Monday morning for me. If that project goes, and it's basically the same building, I am not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna charge you guys full boat for something that people are gonna do twice.
No doubt.
Look, I'm just saying, and, and that's not a number that I'm gonna be able to tell you.
Okay.
I'm, that, that is, that is something, but I, you know, this pro, this process has gone on a long time, and I, you know, we want to see it through. Definitely will work, you know, work something out. I know that the projects are gonna be, you know, probably, so.
From your perspective, and, and we have a long tenure in the architecture industry, Greg, um, so, uh, can you just ballpark, how long have you been, um, in architecture? Okay, okay, you're good. You've seen many economic cycles, just as the point of mine. So, we're in an unprecedented time right now. This is the perfect storm, um, uh, economic challenges in terms of building. And I, and I had, I do have some data about consumer prices and, and building, building prices. It's completely unprecedented in the last fifty years. We have seen prices in the past, I, I wanna know if you agree with this, we've seen prices spike in, in years gone by, and then prices then return to something of a baseline. Do you think that, that that's gonna be the same in this situation as it has in previous situations?
In my mind, I, I see them coming down. Do I see them coming down, probably, to the level they, right where they were? I doubt it.
I don't think anything ever goes down to where they were.
But, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna, I, I don't believe it will stay.
Sixty cents a gallon.
Right.
Correct. Right, and from, from my analysis, it looks like, some of these things are hundreds of percentages higher than they were at the beginning of the year, than last year in twenty-four. So if it's only fifty percent more, it's a very dramatic decrease. I mean, am I, am I way off in my logic here?
No, no, I mean, all I can say is that, uh, the contractors that, that we talked with, you know, they're doing, they're, they're following the trends and every week, you know, they're getting price for what another stuff is. And because that fluctuates and it keeps going up and up and up and up, you know, and some, some things are checking every month, but a lot of things is every week, and they're, and they're holding their number, you know, a bid, or whatever their bid is.